I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Coralville City Council to order on December 19th, 2023. Could I have the roll call, please?
Peterson.
Here.
Gross.
Here.
Hoon.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Goodrich.
Here.
All council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, the city administrator, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mayor, I would like to motion, to have motion to amend the agenda by removing item 13Q on the consent calendar.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda, the amended agenda. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gross. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The amended agenda is approved. Number four, community comments. This is a time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the individual speaking time and the overall comment period based on the number of speakers or any accommodation that a speaker might need. So is there anyone that would like to speak to us this evening? Okay. Step up to the microphone and just share your name and where you're from.
My name is Lynn Gallagher. I live near Solon. I wanted to talk to you about some shared values, which include nonviolence, respect, compassion, and empathy. I'm assuming that everybody thinks that the world would probably be a better place with more of all of those. So I'd like you to think about the fact that rodeo is antithetical to all those values. Rodeo is about violence, a lack of respect, a lack of compassion, and a lack of empathy. Rodeo is animal abuse for profit and entertainment. It's a spectacle of abuse. That's what it is. They try and tell you that the animals are behaving naturally, and that is a lie. Without spurs, flank straps, electric shock, and other physical violence, those animals do not act like that. They don't want to be there. They're forced to participate. In cities that have a humane ordinance and have banned the use of spurs, flank straps, and electric shock, they don't have rodeos. Because like I said, the animals will not quote "perform" without being abused. So I'm asking you, by the way, if you want more information, I know you've gotten some in the past. If you want more information about rodeos, if you'd like to have a discussion, I would be happy to. And my email is on here, so you can contact me. But I came to ask you to align your actions with your values and stop having rodeos in Coralville at the extreme arena. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yeah, step up to the mic and share your name and where you're from.
A little bit shorter here. Deb Gallagher, no relation, just friends. So, raise your hand if you grew up with a pet. Okay. Keep your hand up if your pet taught you compassion and helped you to develop patience, respect, and the humanizing ability to see the world through another's eyes. Keep your hand up if your pet provided a loving bond that is now a cherished memory of your childhood. If your pet gave you a sense of security and comfort and helped you handle life's stressors, loneliness, and in some cases even traumatic events. If your pet taught you responsibility and fostered your capacity to nurture others, provided you a sense of continuity, reminding you of your roots and the simple joys of life, and accepted and loved you unconditionally. I bet you can keep your hands up. You remember those pets. Okay, now let me ask you some other questions. Would you take your child to a public event where people deliberately dominate, bully, torment, frighten, and often injure or kill animals like your beloved pets? Because these pets, you know, the pets you grew up with are no different in terms of sentience and the ability to feel than those animals that perform in rodeos. Would you believe these people when they insist that they care for these animals? Would you agree with people who argue that it's good clean fun, a time-honored tradition and part of a cultural heritage? Would you think it's morally defensible as a way of making a profit? Would you allow your child to participate in such an event? Because they do have children's rodeos, which do anything but, as a lifelong educator, do anything but teach compassion and all those things that your childhood pet taught you. Would you want your city council to support such events in your town? Or would you let them know that it's unacceptable? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak with us? Okay. All right, we will move on to number five, the West Land Use Area Master Plan Amendment. This is the third reading of an ordinance that would update and amend our current West Land Use Area Master Plan. Could I have the ordinance, please?
Order number 2023-1016, an ordinance amending the Coralville Community Plan 2014 in addition. By amending the 2016 Coralville West Land Use Area Master Plan as previously amended, this ordinance introduced for third and final consideration by council member Knutson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoon.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes. Number six, we have the first reading of our Hate Crimes Ordinance. And this ordinance would allow for enhancements pursuant to city ordinance. Could I have it read, please?
Ordinance number 2024-1001, an ordinance amending Chapter 41 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Coralville regarding violation of individual rights, hate crimes. This ordinance introduced first consideration by council member Gross, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. I'll just start off by saying I appreciate all of the advocates that came forward and asked us to put this specific ordinance on the books. This was something we talked about actually for a few years and thought that what we had in our code was sufficient. Some of these advocates, you know, were asking for some additional protections, and I'm happy that we are able to do that, given the difficulty that we're seeing, you know, with a lot of traditionally marginalized groups. So I really appreciate that we are able to do this. Do we have any other questions or comments on this item?
Thanks, Kevin, for working on this, putting it together.
Yeah, really appreciate that.
Just one clarifying question, Mayor. So I saw, and I haven't read the actual ordinance proposal, but I saw that there was a bomb threat had been called into the synagogue over the weekend. So like, if those perpetrators are found, like would that get, would a charge get exacerbated because of this?
Well, that would be a county attorney question, because that's obviously over a simple misdemeanor. So I don't know what, I don't know what they would do in that case.
But there have been instances, other instances where the synagogue has been threatened. There was one a year ago, and I think there were some issues with that one in terms of where they placed, there were flyers.
Yeah, I mean, there's a fine line between the First Amendment and stepping over the line. And sometimes people who put this information, this material out, know how to walk that line pretty well. So yeah, they were more, that was more on city streets and everything. It was not like they went up to people's houses and put it on there.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Hoon.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes. Number seven, funding agreement with United Action for Youth. This agreement will approve $12,000 in funding to support the UAY Peer Mentor Program for LGBTQ students in Coralville. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving an agreement with United Action for Youth to provide funding via its Peer Mentor Program. This resolution introduced for adoption by council member Hoon, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Questions or comments on this item?
Is this a one-time thing or is it like a fiscal year?
This is, the agreement is for just FY '24. That would be a funding decision in the future for the council if they wanted to continue this.
Yeah, so this is a program that they are implementing. Again, I've spoken with the director of UAY a few times about this. And they're implementing this program because of some of the challenges that we're seeing at the state level and specifically attacking LGBTQ plus youth. And so UAY started this program in response to that, because they anticipated that they're going to be seeing a lot more mental health issues with this population. So they, I'm hoping we can contribute, continue to contribute this funding to support that program.
That's what I'm hoping as well.
Yeah, same. Any other questions or comments?
Did they submit a formal request for this money, like the other agencies have?
This was a request that came just, you know, as a proposal. And I thought that it sounded like a good idea, so. And you had mentioned you wanted to see some increases in the social services funding when we had our budget discussion. And so I thought this would be a good way to fulfill that request.
You said they submitted a proposal. Did we all see that? And I don't know if I ever saw it.
No, there was not like a, they didn't go through the channel that the other agencies go through. Because this is a relatively new program that they started.
So I assume in the future, when, if they request additional money, they would go through that same process?
Yeah, they would be able to do that, yeah. Like I said, because this is a new program, I'm not, I don't believe they were even working on it during the time those requests were being made, so. Any other questions? Okay, could I have the roll call?
Peterson.
Aye.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoon.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number eight, Brown Deer Golf Club Management Agreement. So we have several steps to this agenda item. The first is an agreement that would approve Sean McCarty to serve as the golf professional at Brown Deer Golf Course. And this agreement would run from January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2026. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving that certain management services agreement with Sean McCarty to serve as golf professional at the Brown Deer Golf Club. This resolution introduced for adoption by council member Peterson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Hoon. Any questions or comments?
Yes, Mayor, this one and the next one would be renewals of their contracts. The third one would be a new contract, because the previous individual had retired. So the first two are extensions, and then the last one would be a new one.
Awesome, thank you. Any other questions? All right, roll call, please.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoon.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item B, we have a management services agreement with Brian Wernamont to serve as the assistant golf professional at Brown Deer. And this three-year agreement would cover the same time period as the previous one. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving that certain management services agreement with Brian Wernamont to serve as the assistant golf professional at the Brown Deer Golf Club. This resolution introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Any questions or comments on this? Okay, roll call.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoon.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item C, we have a maintenance coordinator agreement with Nick Leach for Brown Deer Golf Course. And this agreement would cover the same time period as the previous two. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving that certain Brown Deer Golf Club golf course, golf maintenance coordinator agreement with Nick Leach. This resolution introduced for adoption by council member Knutson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or comments?
I'd just like to say that we have had such a good history at Brown Deer Golf Club, both with our professionals that are out there golfing and also the land that it's on and the beauty and so on. And I just hope that'll continue and want to thank them for signing up again with their agreements.
Awesome.
Thanks.
Yeah, you bet. Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoon.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number nine, Creekside Sports Park Cross Country Ski Trails. This agreement will allow the Iowa City Nordic Club to develop and groom cross-country ski trails at the Creekside Sports Park. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving an agreement with the Iowa City Nordic Club for the use and grooming of Creekside Sports Park Cross Country Ski Trails. This resolution introduced for adoption by council member Gross, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Hoon. Okay, any questions or comments? And Alex, you have some information to share with us?
Yes, Mayor, is there any way to pull up the packet on this? Or maybe they'll help Scott or Thor? I mean, go over the agreement and the map and then some of the guidelines. Close that out. This might be a Scott.
Okay. Maybe. There we go. We're done. Look at those pictures. Actually, council.
Round one.
Round one. There it is. Okay, there you go, the agreement.
Did you find it?
Yep.
Great.
So the memo's up above, and there's the agreement.
Fantastic. Thanks, Thor. Thank you, Mayor and council. And congrats, Mitch, on your term.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thanks for having me. I'm Alex Budmeyer, Park Superintendent. And Sherry asked me to come present on this agreement with the Iowa City Nordic Club. So we'll go over the agreement a little bit and the course that's proposed, and then some grooming guidelines as well. Some of the highlights of that. And then this route will use an already established natural service trail that's at Creekside Cyclocross Course currently out there at the park. And we'll also look at those grooming guidelines that I mentioned, provided by the University of Minnesota's Recreational Outdoor Sports Program, so you can reference that. Super exciting partnership, which provides yet another outdoor recreational opportunity in Coralville for winter activities. Now we just need some snow. Members of the Iowa City Nordic Club have joined us today. Todd Gillahan will be our point of contact, and we'll queue him on some guidelines here in a bit. So thanks for joining us, guys. The Iowa City, I'm just gonna use the acronym ICNC. They have a long history of grooming and maintaining Nordic center facilities in Johnson County. This once included Ashton at the University of Iowa, which is no longer an option. So they've been seeking a new home here in the metro. They've also groomed at Brown Deer Golf Course, but we decided that wasn't an option either. They are still actively grooming at Kip Park in partnership with Johnson County Conservation when it snows. Thanks for coming, guys. So just some of the highlights of the agreement, and we can kind of go through this quick. But I, you know, I mentioned the guidelines from the University of Minnesota. So there, you know, there is an art and science to this. Again, Todd can talk about that here in a bit. This will be open to the public, like all our facilities. It's excited about that. And the grooming will not take place on any other constructed single-track trails or paved trails. It'll all be on grass. It's important to note that. No demands or costs to the city. And they'll have four additional trail crew members, or groomers you call them, that can operate the snowmobile, which is already placed on site. Three inches, that's the standard for grooming, correct? So any grooming that takes place, there has to be a pack of three inches. And ICNC also has a liability insurance coverage of a million dollars. And then this agreement will be effective for three years upon adoption. So we're excited about that. Going over the map here, everybody's familiar with Creekside Park. This was provided by ICNC. As you can see here, there's the ball fields and the parking lots, so there's an established parking area for skiers. Right now, we've staged the groomer, which is a snowmobile with a trailer on it by the concession stand here where my cursor is. And then the red line represents the route that they'll be grooming. So it offers, you know, some flat stuff here on the east side of the park and that field, and then uses some of these terraces that we also use for the cyclocross course. And then there's an option to also groom kind of along this prairie line up into the barn area of the gay farm, too. So it'll be a really exciting opportunity here when we get some snow. So, you know, there's an art, like I mentioned, there's an art and science to this grooming. And ICNC provided this guideline from the University of Minnesota's Recreational Sports and Outdoor Program. And if you read through the packet, you know, there's quite a bit that goes into it. And, you know, at this point, I'll queue Todd or other members of ICNC to talk about that if they wish. Anything specifically you want to mention?
No, I guess the one thing we have, we have a good dedicated crew.
You should step up to the mic, so we can hear you.
We have a good dedicated volunteer crew. We've got all the equipment for both places, Kip Park and for Creekside. And as Alex kept on saying, the one thing we need, obviously, is snow. But this groomer, what we can do is we also got a roller. So the key is, is when we get, you know, fluffy snow, we can actually roll it and pack it, and then the snow sticks around a little longer, and then we take actually our groomer over it. And if you ever, like, alpine skied or downhill skied, it's like a corduroy look, that's what we can put with this groomer of ours.
So there's two types of skiing that takes place with this. It's like a skate ski, which is the center corduroy that he mentioned, and then a classic line on the sides. Is that how it works?
Correct. Yeah, our groomer actually, just in one pass, can lay both of them. So we'll have two different, I would say the majority probably in town, probably 60 to 70%, probably classic, and the other people skate probably.
Skate ski, so kind of like, almost like a rollerblade motion, where you're kicking the skis out from side to side, and then classic would be just...
Back and forth.
Back and forth. Excellent. Yeah, thanks. This would be a great time to offer up any questions while Todd's up at the podium or for myself.
Any questions?
I'd be interested to know how you finance yourselves.
We are a 501(c) nonprofit, and just over the years, we've done different fundraisers. And each year, we have people just contribute. We have people that actually have foundation and has given us money every year and so forth. And this is our 10th year. So over time, at first, we've only had one set of equipment. So just in the last two years, we bought another whole set of equipment, so we can do the two different places.
One of the questions I had was about liability, which I see you guys are providing. I'm curious how much that costs. It's a million-dollar policy, I guess?
I think, I think it's $650 a year, I think we pay.
For both locations?
Correct, yep.
Is that comparable?
Yeah.
My question would be, is it open to the public? Or what does somebody got to do to become a member of the club, just to be able to...
All you got to do is ski. And then a lot of times is what we do is we ask for, you know, people to contribute. Because some years, if we get a lot of snow, we can spend $1,000 in gas. You know, the machines really go through the gas, but that's what we do. And we have people on Facebook, and we have a PayPal account, and people just, you know, send us $20 or $25, and a little bit helps for that. And all of our, you know, time is all, you know, volunteer.
Thank you.
Excellent. Sorry, go ahead.
Well, just another detail for skiers. Does Kip Park offer skis for rent? Or is, where is it that you get rental skis?
The only ones in town that do it are Finn and Feather Rent, and then also the Iowa City Rec Center Rents.
Thank you.
All right, well, this sounds very exciting, and I appreciate you sharing your information. Thank you, Alex, for your presentation as well. I think this will be a great way to encourage people to get outside and be active during the winter months, for sure.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me.
Yeah, yeah, you bet. Okay. Any final questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Hoon.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes.
Actually, Mayor, I just thought of something. May I?
Yes.
Okay. I know that it's groom, and not all trail in Coralville is getting plow in the winter. So there will be people that walking the trail. Would you guys have signers to say, this is, you know, for cross-country skis, or don't walk on here? How do we push that information out to the general public?
So we're a kind of association with ICor, you know, that you do with the trails. And I've talked to Mike Frazier about that, and he had some signs made up when they did the Creekside Trail. So what we ask is, is if there are walkers, to walk on the side. And we probably will put some signage up. I've been working with Mike on that. Some stuff that he's had over at, over by Camp Cardinal when they groomed the trails over there for fat biking. So we just have them walk off toward the side and not down the middle of the track.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are we, we're good on this one? Did we, it was approved, right? All ayes. Okay, thank you. All right, we are going to move on now. That's okay. Number 10, turf and horticulture agreement for the Iowa River Landing CAM areas. This three-year agreement is for turf and horticulture services in the Iowa River Landing North and South CAM areas. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution accepting bids and a warning to turf and horticultural contract with Greg's Lawn Service, Inc. for the I River Landing North and South Common Area Maintenance Areas. This resolution introduced for adoption by council member Hoon, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Any questions or discussion on this item? Roll call.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoon.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 11, city administrator compensation package. This would increase the city administrator compensation package by 3.25% starting on July 1st, 2023, and 3% starting July 1st, 2024. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving the compensation package for the city administrator. This resolution introduced for adoption by council member Peterson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. I just want to say thank you to our wonderful city administrator for all of his hard work. We are very, very fortunate to have you working on behalf of our community. Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoon.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 12, commission appointment. I would entertain a motion to concur with the recommendation of appointing Anita Slade to the Civil Service Commission.
Motion made.
Moved by Peterson. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hoon. Could I have the roll call, please?
You can do a voice vote.
Voice vote, okay. Could I have a voice vote, please?
Aye.
All in favor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, the appointment is accepted. Thank you.
What the hell's gonna happen when I leave?
Oh, stop.
You might just have to come back.
Yeah. Okay, number 13, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended.
Madame, may I ask council to consider motion to approve the consent calendar as amended?
And that is with the omission of item Q.
13Q.
13Q, yep, all right. Moved by Hoon. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Could I have the roll call?
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoon.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
The consent calendar is approved, all ayes. Number 14, city administrators' report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to thank Mitch Gross for 16 years of service to the city of Coralville. It's been a great 16 years. You know, if you think back of all the things that have been accomplished in that 16 years, it's pretty amazing. And your dedication to the... And your dedication to the community is appreciated. And I know you'll continue to give your service. And I admire what you've done with the, with the school district and West High and the students. Because I've heard from many of your students what impact that you've had. And I just appreciate, I've learned a lot from you over the years and I just appreciate that. So thank you, Mitch.
Okay. All right, mayor's report. So I just will echo what everyone has said. Thank you, Mitch, for your service. Thank you for being a voice for change. Thank you for being a good friend. Thank you for that time when you brought a bottle of Jameson to my house. It was during the pandemic. I had to get that one in. But yeah, you know, we're going to miss you a lot. We are, your service has been incredible. And a lot of the things that we've accomplished in the city of Coralville have, have happened because of, of the foundation that, that you laid. So we're definitely going to miss you a lot. And, and yeah, it'll, it'll, it'll be an absence of void, for sure.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes. I also wanted to just double check, since this is our last meeting before the holidays. Can, can you tell us what the holiday schedule is for next week?
Yes, holiday waste will all be one day delayed. So if you should, if you're on Monday, you'll get your pickup, it's on Tuesday and vice versa. And then the library and the recreation center will be closed two days, both the day before and the day of Christmas, so.
Awesome. Thank you for that. And I just want to wish everyone happy holidays. Have, hope you're all healthy, happy, and safe as you celebrate your holiday. All right, that's all I have. City attorneys' report.
I too want to echo, uh, thank you, Mitch, for your service over 16 years. As a fellow history buff, I will miss our discussions about that and your JFK socks in November. So I always, I will remember that. You also will still be around if you have to bail me out if I make a bad call at the football game. And I know that we spent a lot of times on Saturdays at dance competitions over the years that we are now both, both done with, I believe. I'm not. You're not done yet? Okay, well, you're almost done then. Almost. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Committee and council members' report. We'll start down at this end with Councilmember Knutson.
Thank you. I'll echo what everybody said and add a couple of things. You can't tell it by looking at us, but he's been an important mentor to me. I've been working with him two years and I think we've sat down multiple times. Encourage him not to change his phone number so we can continue to reach out to him for, for help. I wouldn't blame you if you did, but it's really been great working with you and I've learned a lot from you. Really appreciate everything you've done for, for me and of course, more importantly, for the city. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Gross.
Madam Mayor, can I request to go last?
You can go last. I didn't know if you wanted to do your regular time or we'll give you the, we'll give you the closing spot. Councilmember Huen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council Gross, I, just like everyone else, I would like to express my thank for pushing for new changes in the city of Coralville. And because of that push, you paved the way for me to sit here today to serve our city. So thank you. Change is hard, but change is needed. And I'm glad that you set your foot out to push for that change. So thank you. We'll miss you. Come crash our party anytime. And I want to wish everybody a safe and happy holidays, however you choose to celebrate. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson.
Well, I'd like to echo the same about Mitch. Unfortunately, I've only got to sit on council with you for three meetings and, and I really wish it had been longer. Mitch, you've been a big role in all aspects of my life. The three things that I hold dear, you know, my job, you've always been helpful with that. My, my run for city council, you helped out. And, and raising my kids, you're, you know, a huge part of that, too. So thank you for everything you do, did for my kids and future kids. I know you've had kids that went from Northwest and you have them in West High as seniors now. So they're kind of part of your family, I suppose, by now. But, and please be new, or nice on the new guy when you're out in the peanut gallery. So, but yes, and, and I'd like to also echo what everybody said about the holidays and enjoy your time with your family. And, you know, and I will promise you, this is the last city council meeting I'm going to this year.
All right, Councilmember Goodrich.
Well, I do have a few memories. And Councilmember Gross, it's been an honor to work beside you. From new tennis courts to municipal buildings to conference center, the arena, fieldhouse. From Camp Cardinal Road to Scanlon Farms to Westland Use Area and Southeast Area. Through flood mitigation and new developed parks and trails. During 10 of your 16 years, I've seen your work passionately for underserved communities. And in your role as Mayor Pro-Tim, you many times have carried representation for Coralville with professionalism and grace. Fourth of Julys and celebrations carry unspoken memories. And thank you for choosing to be a major cog in making the wheels run in Coralville these many years. You are truly leaving the city in a good place. And we will continue to look to you for partnership and most of all, friendship. Thank you, Mitch.
Okay, go for it.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And I'm weighing this too, but just, I want to again start with appreciation. And I am so very, very grateful that I've been able to serve the city and to serve in this body. It's been a true honor. And as I said during my comments outside, that it, it really will be the people that I miss. And I, if you read the article in the Gazette the other day, I said, never in my life have I seen a group of people work harder than I saw the city staff work during the flood. And I always hold true to that and use that as an example in all aspects of my life. And the, the staff and the, some of you that are here, you just, you're absolutely outstanding and do just tremendous, tremendous work. And you're oftentimes underappreciated, definitely underpaid. But your influence is huge. It's just bigger than you can ever imagine. So thank you very, very much for all that you do for the city. And Ellen and Kelly, I appreciate your partnership, too. You know, you, you guys are a dynamic duo. And I really, really appreciate just all, all that you do. And Ellen, all the gains that we made in housing was your work. And I loved working with you on those projects and, and just your leadership. And Kelly, even, you know, it's in my role now as a principal, I, I use you as an example, too, just of what it's like to be an administrator. It's, it's not an easy job. I, I feel like, you know, I run a city of 2,000 myself every day and it's, it's daunting. It's absolutely daunting. But I do feel that Coralville is a much different community today than it was in 2007. I think it's a much better community today than it was in 2007. Lori, you mentioned some of the highlights. And I think as I reflect back, you know, some of my favorites were definitely the CCPA. That was something I believed strongly in. And that's why I always got frustrated when our bonding agencies criticized us because I think citizens and residents have a right to enjoy the arts. And if we got deemed on that, I was willing to take that. You know, the I River Landing, when I was doing my interview with the reporter last week, he was newer to the community. And when I mentioned to him that that area was a truck stop, a adult bookstore, and a strip club, you know, he had no idea that that was its history. And I think, you know, we had to really, we almost seem to have like a memorial to that of some type. That should have been one of our sculptures. Yes. Yeah, we'll try that next, Ellen. But, you know, I just, I just love that area. You know, we've had a significant increase in our social services funding since I've been here. I appreciate that. And as, and I appreciate your comments, Megan. I mean, I, when I think about the food pantry and being on the original founding board, no one, I think, would have thought that it would end up what it is today. And it's just the way it serves our community and is a hub. I'm just, yeah, again, incredibly, incredibly grateful. And last, I did want to say, too, I hope Dawn, if you're watching, I will miss you tremendously as well and I hope you get well. You're a huge, huge part of this community, obviously. And I'll definitely expect to butterscotch every other week from you. And last, I'm going to end it with this. As I was talking out here with Mary Lindell, we do have an idea, a plan, that we've decided for each public meeting, whether, we're going to start with Coralville City Council. We're going to probably have two Manhattans. And then we're going to start Facebook live-ing and just do live commentary on all the meetings. And we're going to take it on the road. We're going to do the school board, Iowa City City Council, that will be maybe four Manhattans. And just kind of keep doing all the public meetings. And, and I think that could be something that's going to catch on.
Like Statler and Waldorf from the Muppets show.
That's what we said. That's what we said. All right, appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you very much. Okay. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Move by Huen.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.